House Member Jill. And Dina's absent, Peckel.
Here.
Tucker, absent, and Mira, here.
Here. We'll call for Chamber Board.
Agadas.
Here.
Goodell.
Here.
Grant.
Here.
Durma.
Here.
Oki.
Here.
Hollinger, here, and Tucker.
Here.
And Salazar is absent.
Thank you. Please stand to pledge allegiance, please. Ms. Agadas, please, believe us.
I'd be honored to. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. With that, moving on, public appearances. So this is a public meeting if you wish to address the Council or Chamber Boards concerning any item within the Council or Board's jurisdiction to be handed and be acknowledged by the Mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The Mayor reserves the right to place a time limit to each person's presentation of three minutes. Since requested that longer presentation be submitted to the Council on Friday. Do we have any public appearances? Seeing nobody running, all right, we'll move on to Item B. Joint Meeting Discussions, B1, Discussion Regarding Various Issues of Interest to Both Agencies. With that, I'll open it up. Would you like to start?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for inviting us.
I appreciate all of you, first of all, for being here, but most important, for being a part of what we do. You know, it's nice to look across the table and see that many faces that are interested in Imperial and have been there for that many years doing it. You represent a variety of economic interests, variety of commercial interests, and yet, at the same time, it's all about moving the city forward, and I appreciate that. So whatever's going on in the past is going on in the past. We are at a new place now where things are starting fresh, and I'm glad we have a chance to kind of lay some groundwork and see what we can go forward, you know, especially over the coming year. I'd like to see this become something we can do, at least annually, not biannually, you know, but definitely something we need to do to stay in touch with each other.
If we can have the record reflect this, my good genial, yeah, President.
So thank you all very much for making the time to be here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to this, too, you know, moving things forward in a good light.
So I'll kind of open it up. I know we're here about a month ago or so, a month and a half. We asked for a meeting between both agencies, the City and the Bureau Chamber of Commerce, just so we can open up freely and talk about things that have happened in the past, how we can, like Mr. Peckel said, is push that to the back and move forward from this point on, how we can work together in best interest for the city, so. If there's anything you guys like to add, please feel free. We're not going to make this formal to say, you know what, we got to wake up. Just, we can all speak freely. Just know that we are live streaming this. So it says, there's camera and there's microphone, so. Just that if we speak, if we can speak clearly, loud, so that they can pick us up.
Yeah, we expect people to complain they can't hear us because we're not all on our individual mics, but these small mics can pick us up if we speak out, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So Ms. Agadas, you're still President, so I'll.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for inviting us. So you've met our Chamber Board, and we are missing one Chamber member who was not able to be here. And so this has been an interesting time for us. We have a lot on our plates, and, but I guess I would pose the question as, how do you see us moving forward in a very positive manner? Because I know that we are very interested in that. How do you, the City Council, see us moving forward in a positive manner?
I guess it would come down to how you view your mission in the community. I've never sat on a Chamber Board. I've never been a member of the Chamber of Commerce. So I'm not one to speak to what a Chamber of Commerce does. So why don't share with me, educate me, on how you individually or as a group view your role? So I have a better, a clearer picture of what's in your mind about what you should be doing going forward in the community, what you want to do in the community.
Hey, do you have our missions?
I do, I do. So, so, and I'm just looking at a couple of things that the Chamber has, really holds true and has really sunk their teeth into. First of all, from a Chamber's perspective, the Chamber takes pride in our community. They were here to represent the membership, those individuals, and I say individuals because they're not all businesses, that have trusted us and gone ahead and invested and basically said to us, you know, they paid their membership and they want us to represent them in the most positive manner. We're here to advocate on their behalf. We are here to represent and to enhance and to promote their businesses in the best way possible with the resources that we have. And we do that through events. We do that through ribbon cuttings. We do that through Chamber mixers and what have you. And we understand that we, in order to be a Chamber, we can't do that without the City. In other words, we wouldn't exist as a Chamber if we didn't have a City to represent. So that has been something that has been very difficult for us. But we are very interested in still continuing on and still being an advocate in the community, taking a look at the issues and be, you know, be available to them with the resources that we have. And we, this Chamber here represents businesses in the community that have been in business for a very, very long time. And I think that speaks volumes. They all have volunteered. This is a volunteer position. They all either live in Imperial or their business is in Imperial. They've gone to school in Imperial. And they love Imperial. They really do. I've heard Mr. Durma say that, you know, the heart of Imperial. And so a lot of these Chamber Board members take time out of their busy schedules to come together and, you know, for the purpose of putting together ideas and what we could do to enhance and promote and support the business community.
Appreciate that. Anybody else have thoughts to share? I'm just trying to get a clearer picture.
Yeah, well, it's a membership organization, and not all the members are, live in Imperial or have it, but they do have, do business in Imperial. And so, you know, we're here to help advocate for them. And if there's rules and regulations, whether it be City, State, or government, or federal, that are adversary to conducting business, we advocate on their behalf, you know, and all the Chambers do. And that's one of the big things that businesses are looking for is, is help advocating, because they may be small enough they can't, they can't do it on themselves. And so the Chambers have been a vehicle to help represent them. And so that's one of the major things we do besides the events and mixers and networking and get people to meet with everybody else, you know, so that they know the other businesses and what others are doing and try and do business with each other to help enhance their business. And we also represent the City a lot of times in people that are looking to see if they should come to the City of Imperial. Because they contact us and say, hey, you know, we've heard of Chambers of Commerce, we want, we're a member of another Chamber of Commerce, what's going on in the City of Imperial? And so we advocate for that.
Mr. Durma.
Yes.
You've been doing business in the City for over 50 years?
No, no, no. Not even 40 yet. November 1st, 42 years in business.
Forty-two years, awesome.
Business, I have.
So I'm just curious, how do you see, what do you think of the changes you've seen taking place in the City? Over the last 10 years?
I've been involved with the Chamber and also the City for all that time, 40-plus years. Fifteen years on the actual Board, a long time before, and I just recently came back. And the reason I came back was because, as A.J. said, I always promote the City and the Chamber in the sense of saying, I've say it in all our meetings almost, that the fact that your Chamber is your heart. And without the heart, we all, we just have to push that heart together to work together, and we want to show the City what we can do. And then we ask for the City to show us what they can do. And we can do that all by just shaking hands and moving on and promoting each other, because that's all we're doing. To our members, that's all we do, is promote. And that's what we want. We want more members to come into the Valley. We want them to come into the City of Imperial. So that's how we work together. And it's a strong word, but it's not a word that's not reachable. It's a word that's very reachable in all. It really is.
So how do we help you? How do we, as a Council, help our staff be helpful to you?
So if I could just respond to that, we are actually in a very exciting time, the Chamber is, because with the changes and with the changes that we're going through, we're looking at the opportunity to be self-sustaining. We're looking at the opportunity to be an even bigger advocate and a bigger presence in the community. And we're looking, and, you know, we're looking to develop and promote and strengthen the Chamber in the business community in the City of Imperial. So this is very exciting for us. We're looking forward to doing a lot of amazing things and such. So how the City can help us is a very interesting question. We really can't operate independently as a Chamber, so we're looking to just develop, hopefully, a really good positive relationship with the City so that we can move forward and accomplish our mission, our vision, and what we want to accomplish in the years to come.
Are there any specific proposals, anything, you know, that anybody has in mind that, you know, would help? I know Jerry's talked to me, or his son has talked to me, about, you know, areas involving fees and regulation and things like that. I'm assuming that as a Chamber, you want to take part in conversations like that with our staff. I'm just curious, are there any specific things that have come to mind that have arisen out of the Chamber meetings or arisen from within your membership that you want to share with us that we could help with? Well, I can't say we can do everything, but at least gives us an idea what the playing field looks like.
I think one of the things is communication. That we got to be open with the communication. If something's bothering somebody on something, then we communicate with each other before it festerous, you know. And so we want to keep an open and positive communication going. And so if we're working, let's say, Christmas in a small town, we've got the new thing with the fees and everything that you need to charge, we're just fine. We just need to make sure that we're all ahead of the game when we sit down, maybe sit down at the start of the year and say, okay, what functions are we going to do together?
Right.
How do we, how do we work this out together so there's no miscommunication, no issues that come up at the end? How do we, you know, what are you guys going to do? What are we going to do? And work together to set that down? And I think, I think more, more meetings like this, more meetings of staff and our people to sit down and go over the plans that we have, so everybody knows what's going on, there's no surprises.
Please, how, it's on the table.
I think before we even set dialogue or try to move forward on this, I think it's, it's great that we can have this and having it on whatever this is is fine, but this is not what I wanted. What I wanted was for us to be in a room and be frank. But unfortunately, we have laws, we can't do that. Those meetings would probably be done in 30 minutes and we all come out of it either with some scars or we're all together on the same page. Unfortunately, we can't do that. But I don't think we can set dialogue. I don't think we can do anything and move forward until we have frank discussion. Now, we can all sit around here and pat each other on the back and say all the great things that we're going to do, but the bottom line is, there was some deeply concerning issues, I believe, on our side, definitely. And I don't think you even had an idea what was going on. That's the reason why I wanted this meeting, is for us to have dialogue and talk frankly. There's something that you didn't like or something we didn't do personally or as a Council? That's what I want to hear. I don't want to hear what, how great everything is, because it's not. And so I think it's very important for us to say what it is. Ray, you're right, I don't want to shake hands, but I want to know everything. I want to know what brought us to this right now. I want to know why we had stuff that was smeared all over Facebook and then the people in the community are upset. Things were said that made us look really bad as a Council. And we've always said, we're transparent. Anyone can come and talk to any one of us at any time. Not one person called me. Through this whole time, not one person called me. Then we bring up things to the representatives here at our meeting and ask the point-blank question, did you even know about some of the things that your director was doing? And you didn't. I don't think you were privy of that. Those are deep concerns of mine. That's why I wanted us to meet together. I would rather have met, sitting at burgers and beer and having a drink and talking about it and hashing it out like real people negotiate and hash things out. I don't think we'd have ever got to this point. It would have never been this. I think there's things that's been done that was detrimental to this City. And I seriously say that on the things that were put out in the media, social media, which is crap. That's not where it belongs. It belongs in a meeting like this, or a Council meeting.
So Jeff, I get what you're saying, but I think that in our last meeting, the City Council meeting that we had, I think the Chamber had apologized, I think. The Chamber had apologized and wanting to move forward, and that City Council apologized and wanted to move forward. And that's the reason why we were having this meeting.
Yes, but I also would like to know.
So to go forward, how do you go back?
Well, to move forward is that everybody has to trust one another. And you don't have trust, I don't have trust. I think there's people on your Board that right now, right here, if they were in my business, I'd fire them. Flat-out fire them, because it should have never been this far. The Directorship had called out. I think where people were just going along with what it was, I don't think the whole Board even knew what was going on. I really don't.
Well, I know personally, I just got voted back onto the Board. I personally don't even know what the issue is.
This is what's sad, you don't.
Because, because I won't listen to gossip or this or that. Now, I heard chatter, things are wrong or like that, but nothing specific. Does that make sense?
Then, then I should have, shame on me, because I should have had everything that I've copied over the last few months and brought it here and let you see it. Then you would wonder why. If somebody's representing me, I hire somebody to represent me as a manager, and they go on social media and fire off, I'd fire them in a heartbeat, because that's a direct reflection of your organization. No different than us as Council members elected that if somebody got upset and just started just blaring stuff off on social media, they should be called out on that, too. I'm not trying to be a hardass, I'm not. It's just that we can't get to this point until we all have these issues out. It's nice to say we're sorry, yes. That is a point to move forward. But there has to be some deep-rooted repairs to trust. And I believe that, and it's wholeheartedly I believe that. So I mean, I would like to hear from you guys, what do you have that you have concerns with the Council that's not so well? Or is there something we've done? Is there somebody in our staff that said something or did something that upset somebody? Because this is how you fix it. You don't fix it the other way. I'm sorry, but that's just what it is.
You know, Jeff, that really wasn't our focus, to really get into the, you know, our goal tonight is to work with you and to develop a way of moving forward.
Okay, I agree with you.
We are.
But are you going to sit here and say, okay, all that that happened before just goes away? We wash it away?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay, well, if that's how you're going to do it,
Yes.
then you guys could take care of it, because I don't agree.
It's okay to disagree.
Absolutely.
We don't have to agree.
Absolutely, that's, that's right.
But our purpose tonight is that we are in a good place. We are going to move forward. And we want to work with you to have a good relationship. Now, if, if all we're going to hear is what you just said about, you know, how did we get to this point? Well, we've gone over and over and over till we're blue in the face.
Agent? You have, did you ever call once? As a President, did you call any of us once?
I had conversations with some of your Council, but the important part of this is that we're not, we want to move forward. We want to move forward. We've got an exciting lineup. We have an exciting Board. We're challenged, and we want to move forward.
So with that in mind, and I understand where Jeff's frustrations come from, and I would just agree with him.
I do.
But we, like, but as he pointed out, this meeting is public, and there are things that, there are directions we really need to keep moving forward and things we need to not go back into in a public setting, on a public forum. And that's just the reality of it. Okay, just to be courteous to all parties involved. Okay, will we agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I go back to my question, on how can we move this forward? Moving into next year, we're getting ready to go through a transition here in the City with a new City Manager coming on board with some shifting around of positions, with things that are going to happen in the City. We've got a lot that we're going to be working on in the next few weeks.
Right.
And moving into next year, it's, we anticipate it to be a great year. We know, you know, many things that we want to do over the next year, two years, four years, et cetera. So communications is important. And the ability to trust those who are communicating for us and with us is going to be fundamental here. I think one of the problems we've struggled with over the last year has been the inability to trust our messengers on either side at some point. Maybe you didn't trust ours, I know we haven't trusted yours. And we felt like maybe, and I will say that at that last meeting, when I asked you if you had even seen the application, and you hadn't, that disturbed me, because that suggested to me that trust was an issue over on that other side. But moving on then, for next year, how can we help work together to make sure we don't have that problem? Is there someone else that can be used for that communication? Is there another way that we can work through that communication problem? I know we're going to have somebody new with the help and move in our, in a new direction with that. How do we ensure that new person is going to be able to work well with your organization? Is there some way that you can work with this also?
I guess I would have to say, and I'm, and anybody here is definitely welcome to join me, is that your Chamber represents not only the business community, but individuals who care about the City.
Right.
And to ask us, your Chamber should be right there with you and as you look forward to what the City could become, the Chamber should be right there with you. And so, so the question of what, how can you help us? Really, Darrell, how can we help you to accomplish the goals that you want for the City of Imperial? Because in this table is, every one of these folks here has run a successful business. We're investing in the community. We're buying property. We're opening businesses. We want to develop, we want to move forward. And we employ folks that not only live in Imperial, but come into Imperial and spend dollars in Imperial. And we want to be considered. And, and as you move forward with your change of leadership, then I would suggest, I would hopefully suggest, or that you would allow the Chamber to be part of, one little part of your selection of that individual. And hopefully, hopefully, not just the Council, but as you're, as you have a community forum that we can come in and that we can establish a good dialogue with that person so that we can have some representation of the business community.
Hang on, who do we represent?
You represent the votes. But your votes are also, they work with us in the business community.
So we represent the entirety of the City. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that 100 percent.
All right. And so as we face decisions, I mean, like you said, you've been a part of these things for a long time. I don't have Mr. Durma's years. I've only been working as a volunteer in City Government, City Agencies for 21 years. So I don't have his years, but I have 21 years invested in the City, really, in being a part of it, in planning and on City Council. I love this City. I don't think, and I don't want that to be underestimated. So as I'm looking forward, I'm not, 21 years ago, I was looking at what the City would look like in 20 years. And all the design and all the features that have gone into everything that's happened in that time I've been a part of. And even as I sit here now, whether I serve one more year or another term, I'm looking 20 years down the road on where are we going to be? Because that's our job, is a part of being community leaders. And selecting the right leadership for the City Government is a big part of that. So we're, trust me, we're going to involve as much as we can the people that need to be involved in the decision on who's, on who's going to manage the City and direct it. But we didn't ask you to let us be a part of selecting your Office Manager, your Director, okay? You've made that choice. And you made that choice knowing that there were difficulties involved in her relationship with our City staff. We're going through a hot, fragile City Manager. We're going to be looking for a person who's going to guide the City and the staff in the directions we've been moving forward in, because we're very proud of where the City is at and where it's going to. And we want to see it continue and move in that positive direction. We think there have been a lot of very good changes in this City over this time, and they've benefited the City, and we want to see that continue. But I come back to, how can we help you? How can you help us? You know, you know our events. Our events aren't anything unusual. And, and we are constantly looking for ways to promote the culture in the community that we live in. Promote family activities, promote events, make events available for our children in this community, for the families in this community. So you look at what we're doing, we do tree plantings, we do market days, we provide lights on fields for kids to have soccer games and little league games. That's what we do. You know, we promote a lifestyle that hopefully is encouraging people and has very well encouraged people to come over here. That's why we're pushing 20,000 people in this city. Meanwhile, we try to make sure we have good water, good sewer, good police force. And again, safest city in the state. Are our water rates shocking to people sometimes? Sure. But are they the only ones in the county that are doing that now? No. As other cities have had to go through the same, facing the same changes we are, they're seeing the same actions. But we make those choices, sometimes difficult choices and unpopular choices, because again, we're looking 20, 25 years down the road.
And going down the future of that, the chamber is going to be more involved in the advocacy of those decisions. We want to be, um, we want to have a say and we want to be respected for that and not be criticized. Because the chamber to be effective needs to be self-sustaining so that we can honestly represent our business community and the individuals that have trusted us with their membership dollars moving forward. We have a voice just as strong, and in some cities even stronger and such. But we are here tonight to try to figure out a way how we can move forward. That's what we want.
So suggestions?
Well, I haven't talked to the rest of the board and I don't know what they think about this, but what about like the IID and the, and the county, they had their problems for a while. And they put a two-on-two committee, two members of the chamber board and two members of the city council that meet regularly to go over issues and upcoming events and, and just keep the communication going. If there's something brewing, they can talk about it ahead of time and that could be a little more frank.
That's an awesome suggestion.
Yeah.
And so, I hadn't brought that up, but I was just thinking about that one where, how do we communicate together frankly, as, as Jeff mentioned?
We had a liaison.
Yeah, that was the whole part of the city being a liaison so we can communicate what the city was doing and communicate with the chamber and vice versa. I would bring it back. Since September 30th, that has come along.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that lines of communication are no longer there. So either we're going to start something all over and do something different. But we all know that when you put board members and board members together, it's a little bit different.
Mm-hmm.
A lot different. Because it's easier for me to communicate as a, as a board member or council member to another board member or council, or council. It's keeping those lines of authority, keeping them straight, that chain of command kind of thing. I see it, it's a lot easier because we're seeing eye to eye. You have issues, you have struggles, you have closed session, I have closed session. Those things don't come out. So I feel that the information that if we were to do something like that where members of our council, members of your board were to get together, I think those lines of communication would be a lot, lot better because it would be me and you, Mark.
Right.
Yeah. Ryan and Michelle, or whoever it is, I'm just using names. But I, I think that line of, of communication would be more direct.
So wholeheartedly support that. In fact, one of the things I liked before, that we had up until May was a really nice open relationship between the two. Up until May, things that seemed to have gone well. I mean, let's be honest, when you guys were having trouble with your old head, the headquarters you were in when I took office in 2016, where Tia's house and Papi is now, there was a problem. We found an answer together that met your needs as a transitional office. And then now that, there's been another transition. But you know, I would also point out that we've always maintained, as long as I've been on council at least, a standing time and reporting time for a representative from the chamber at each of meetings to share with us what's going on. You know, it, it's guaranteed minutes that are built into what we do, that there's always that, anybody from the chamber having to share, whomever it was going to be. But just like you had a member of our council sitting on your board simply as an advisory or liaison role.
Right.
I would love it if you would open that up again and we could appoint somebody back as a liaison just to be a communicator at your board meetings if somebody's available with you. Robert's done it effectively for three years, I think he would probably want to continue. And I would love to have somebody from the council back here at our council meetings to give us a report on what you're planning and doing. That's one of the ways that we communicated well for a long time. And it's only very recently that that has become a problem. And we're open, we want that to happen. I like the idea of when necessary, maybe a bimonthly two-on-two. If we have somebody on the board, you wouldn't have to do a two-on-two each month, but maybe you could do a little less often.
It should be once a month. I love that idea. And I think that that would have been going a long time ago to this present day, we would never be in this situation.
I agree. Because I think a lot of the breakdown that took place over the last six months took place because we were hearing different things. And this would have given a chance for our board, you know, at board level to talk about, what are you hearing? Because when we've talked privately, let's be honest, we've acknowledged we've heard different things, yes? Laura, you and I have talked, have we not heard different things over the last six months? Yeah, so this would be a good way to do that. I love that suggestion and would happily, and you know, entertain that as we go into the next year on putting together the two-on-two. But I would also like to make sure we invite somebody from the chamber to be in our meetings to share with us their report and their update, to be a part of what's going on. So that they can also hear the conversations we have there going on behind our, around our events. You know, it's, we, we run into problems all the time with these brown hat things. We have three of us there, that's all. But the two-on-two gives us that ability to engage.
Well, we'll certainly, definitely, I mean, take that back and talk about it as a board. It's a great suggestion that we'll definitely dialogue and such. Now, I might just ask you, what is your vision of a chamber?
My vision of the chamber for me personally, it's, it's a group that should be educating businesses and advocating for businesses. It should be reaching out and helping businesses get better and stronger and be more competitive community-wide and valley-wide. We want people, we want Imperial to be a city you drive to, not through. And the way you make it a city you drive to, not through, is having businesses that people want to come to. Okay, I'll use Jerry as a classic, that's a great example here. I know people who drive from all over the valley to pick up sandwiches from Jerry. He's a business you drive to. He's established a name for himself. Now, let's take whatever his magic has been. I, I envisioned the chamber marketing that magic. You guys become marketing agents. You promote businesses like his around the county, telling people, come in and help and do that. You go in, and I love, for example, when you've done the, some of the, I know you did the fashion show, you've done some other workshops to help train up businesses. That sort of thing is, is ideally what I want a chamber to be. Because it's not something we can do in city government. It's something that you can do in a private sector that promotes our businesses and makes them more consumer attractive. We will help try to find businesses, we want you to help us with that. There's a couple developers here in the valley that keep sucking businesses down south with the freeway onto their property. And we really need to work together, find some developers to help bring businesses up a little bit further up the road where there's a little bit better quality of life, a little bit better, more welcoming environment, if you will, although we won't give them all the breaks that some other cities seem to do sometimes under the table. Hello, city councilman? But we will absolutely work with that. But you know what? We are five. We're a city staff of 60. And actually engaging in the commerce area, we're a city staff of two. Think about that, plus a contractor. How many businesses do you represent? Each of you has contacts beyond our imagination. We want to work with you to bring those businesses in. We want to develop the infill downtown. We want to fill all those slots with small family businesses. We want to see downtown be walkable and marketable. Okay? We'll do everything we can on the infrastructure side, on the zoning side to help that happen. We want to work with you on that. I want to have a meeting with you and talk over the idea of doing, for example, a zoning overlay on the highway corridor, on Aitken corridor, like we did in the, in the Village corridor. Where we actually kind of control what the colors are of buildings, what the styles are of buildings. So we don't get these outliers that look like you plucked them up out of the back of Disneyland and throw them down on the side of the road. But we actually get, you know, development going on here that supports a look and a feel of our community. Meanwhile, it's on us now to go out and look for funding to make the highway better, to make it more consumer, or consumer-friendly. To work at where do we put in stops to help develop, business development along that corridor. Those are those 20-year visions we talked about. Because for God's sake, when a stoplight costs us a half a million dollars for a four-way stop at a big, on a highway intersection, we have to plan for that.
Nine hundred thousand.
I didn't want to go there. That's change orders. Five hundred thousand if you can avoid the change orders.
Good luck.
Yeah, I know. So, thank you very much, it's right there. So we want to do those things, but we have to plan so long. But we need your help. So that's how I see you. I see you as that invaluable resource to develop that side of the community.
So, so your vision, and I am sure that's representative of all your council and such, because I have, I'm sure you would all agree. It's not very far from what we, as a chamber, that's our vision as well. We want to be a resource. We want to be available. We represent a lot of years of business in the community. And I think that needs to be considered.
I'll go this little, this next step, and this is one that may sound harsher than, or worse than it is. But part of our job in city government is to provide our community with a quality of life, a standard of living that they can feel appreciated and that makes them want to stay here and makes them want to bring other people to join them here. So putting on events like Market Days, for example, putting on the parade, things like that, that is our way of giving to our community and saying to them, you matter, we want to do this for you. We want to focus, for us, it's the same as making sure our parks have grass and lights, planting trees, things that we've been slowly but surely trying to get to. And it takes time and money to do all of it. But we've accepted in this city for a long time, and Mark, when you were here, you accepted it too, that we were going to lose thousands of dollars on Market Days. There's, because the only way we can avoid it would be to charge everybody to Market. And I actually saw that proposal somewhere, on, somebody posted that, well, they should charge everybody to go downtown and participate in Market Days.
Good luck.
Do any of us here actually ever think that's something we would want? No, it's not the fairgrounds. We don't want to charge people to walk in a gate to go have a good time with their family. We want them to come have a good time with their family and know that this is something special about our town. And it's been something that's been developed over the years very, very, very well. So we can take on that, knowing we are going to lose some money on that. No, because that's something we actually budget for. The loss is in our budget. Because we know we're going to do it not for profit, but for the citizen rate. And when we saw the losses getting to be too high and the numbers falling off, that's why we've changed from seven to four this year, that sort of thing. But we'll continue as a council, at least as long as I'm voting, I'll continue to vote to continue those. I'm assuming the rest of the council will feel the same way. That's something we very deeply believe in and our community wants it. What I want from you is the business side. The business fairs, the, the things that bring in other vendors, that help your businesses grow. Again, your, we can't do it without you. Your revenues give us the funds to go do the things for the citizens that we want to do, that the citizens want. We're able to have a movie night over in a park over in your neighborhood because you're selling houses and people are moving in there. We don't get a lot of money on house sales, people think we do, but we really don't. Okay? It doesn't generate much for us, but we want businesses here generating tax revenue. So we want you to help us find those and to make it so business attractive. Hey, look, here's all the things we'll do for you if you come into our town. And to communicate with us where the hangups are. If it's timeline issues, if it's fee structures, if it's somebody on our staff that's a roadblock, that's where that two-on-two meeting could be really, really helpful.
And, and I think that that's a really key point right there. Because as we move forward, because I don't think we disagree with that, unless I'm, I do not think we disagree with that. But I think that you also have to realize that as we work and strive for those things, that we also have an opportunity to work with your staff to enhance the business license processing fee. Or enhance the timelines of which it takes to get some feedback or not be surprised by maybe one or two things that, oh, we forgot to tell you that, you know, we're, you know, things of that nature. We're not being critical, it happens. But we want an opportunity to be, voice our opinion about that and not be criticized as we are being anti-city, that we're, that we're, we're criticizing staff. We want to enhance that process. So just like you said, in order to bring that about, each one of us here has a story to tell about what it's been like to try to develop a business or to move forward or to look at your fees, to look at those things. And I think that from that perspective, I think if there's an opportunity to have some open dialogue about enhancing how a business comes to town and what we could do to help that business. And on both sides, from the city side, obviously there's requirements, we understand that. But the opportunity to make that appealing and just, you know, we, I think we would, I mean, we would like that. So, but the vision is not too far from what you want.
Michelle had a comment?
Yes, and so, sorry, I've, I've heard what the chamber is saying and what the city is saying, the responsibilities of the two and how we're not very far off. And I will have to say, being on the board off and on for the last six years, the chamber has definitely gone into a more business educational program.
And we've noticed that.
Than, than events. So the things that, that Darrell, you had mentioned that you think the chamber should be, we are striving towards that. So again, I'm not sure if city council was aware of that or not. Again, I just came on to the board, so I'm, you know, this was my first meeting in, in a year. So I'm just getting updated on what the, the chamber is planned to do, I think is exactly what city council has said it thinks it should do. So.
No, I, I, and that's why I tried, I thought I said that, I hope I articulated, I've seen you do that. And, and that's what I want, that's what I've always thought a chamber should look like.
But one of the things that we do want to assure this council is that we want to be self-sustaining. We want to be independent.
Right.
That was a goal of ours and we're striving for that. It's a trend out there. So we're excited about the opportunity that that brings. Also the challenge that that's going to have on our chamber. But I, I want to assure you that the chamber that you have thought of in the past and has been, I've often heard, you know, is a, is the stepchild of the city. We no longer want to be known as that. We're strong, we're a strong group. We have a very strong business mind. We have a lot of exciting dialogues when we come together and such. And so we're looking forward to being a resource to you, if you'll let us, and also to the community, the business community as well. But we also want to be an advocate. We want to be able to come before the council, any one of us, because any one of us, just because I happen to be the president-elect one more year. But any one of these board members represent the chamber very well. Very, very proud of this board and very, very, it's, it's a pleasure to run this board, if that.
Yes, I kind of feel like I want to, there's some things I need to address related to what Jeff was saying earlier. I feel like there's an elephant in the room. First off, I've had the privilege of being on both, on both the chamber board and on the council. And so it's, it's great that I have the ability to see them from both sides. I respect and value every board member on the chamber. I respect and value every board member on the chamber and all of your businesses. Some of us, I talk to Jerry all the time. I frequent his business all the time. A.J., you and I have continued conversations throughout this process. But I haven't felt comfortable enough to attend any chamber events since the annual release parade. And so, I like the idea of having this council-board relationship, to have like two of us on a committee. But how do we have... And I like the vision that you've spoken about, I like the educational aspect. But how do you hope to remedy what has happened? I mean, is it, as it is now, I'm blocked from your director. I don't know if anyone else on this council is blocked on social media from your director. So, there's no dialogue. There's no way to openly come to your director and talk to her about any events or anything that's happening in the city. I'm blocked, right?
From the Imperial Chamber?
No, from your director's personal page. So, she's blocked several city employees. She's blocked council members. She's made it feel so that there's no possibility of any kind of dialogue between the council and her. So, how... I just don't understand how you're supposed to move forward with a director who's unwilling to have any kinds of relationship with... I know she has with some of the council members, but not all of us. And so, how does she discriminate? How do we move forward? I know that you guys don't want to dwell on the past, but how do we move forward without remedying that specifically?
I'll speak to that. And actually, I want to kind of address Jeff in a little bit, too. Since we've gotten here, I don't see any of us on this side of the table loving any accusations or barbs towards you. And yet, you felt compelled to say that there's somebody sitting here that if we were in your business, you would fire us.
Sure, I would.
When all of this happened, there was bad behavior on both sides of the fence. There were things on social media that I saw that were ugly towards the chamber, that was ugly towards our businesses. It was ugly.
Was that from the staff or a board member here?
From a council member, from husbands. I gave everybody my little speech that I'm the duck on the water. I want our community. I want people to see the duck gliding. If the feet are paddling underneath, that's between us. That's the two-on-two. That's the pick up the phone and call. I am not one to throw mud out there. I don't think it's productive. I feel like there have been feelings. There have been emotions. There has been, I don't want to say bad behavior, but I don't know any other way to say it, on both sides of the fence. But there's also a thing called mercy. There's a thing called grace. There's a thing called forgiveness. And I cannot fix what's happened. That proverbial horse is out of the barn. As a director, as an employer, I have no control over my employees' personal business, which includes their personal Facebook accounts. We don't have to all be kumbaya and everybody's best friend, but we have to be professional. We have to be open. We have to be honest. We have to stick to business and move forward in a positive direction. I don't know how many times we can apologize and say that we're sorry for what's happened in the past. And I haven't heard as many apologies come from the other side for what's happened in the past. But I also know that things are changing. Just like you, somebody just said, "You have your closed sessions. We have our closed sessions." And there's things that we are trying to address. A lot of the things that are happening that are moving forward in a positive direction are our current director's ideas, our luncheon learns, our coffee that she's coming up with and having forums so that small businesses like me can get all of my people trained in harassment training that, you know, you guys do all the time. The big shops have people to do, but I've either got to go online or I need that resource from my chamber. Those are all things that have been moving forward in a positive direction because we're trying to put all of that behind us. I am not here to get into a she did, he did, she did, he did, she did, he did. There's no end to that. There's no benefit. There's no positive. Alls I can say is that it's in the rearview mirror. And I don't know about you, but I can't get anywhere in San Diego in a positive way and stay alive if I'm driving in my rearview mirror. I've got to look forward. So, I'm willing to forgive and forget whatever's back there. My hope and prayer is that you're willing to forgive and forget whatever is back there. And we start from here. Will you be unblocked? Probably not. I can't ask that. Will you have open communication on a business level if you want to pick up the phone and call the chamber? If you want to have that communication on a professional level? I can guarantee you're going to have that. I can guarantee that any one of us are willing to listen to you. To be perfectly honest, half of what was on Facebook, I don't even know because I don't spend a lot of time there. That's not my space. I talked to other professional people that had no clue what's happening over here because 90% of it was on Facebook until it started hitting the press with your press release. And then this happened, and then that happened. And it was the proverbial snowball rolling downhill. And at this point, the snowball has crashed. It's flattened. It's melted. And today is a new day, as far as I'm concerned. It is spring. Trees are growing. Plants are budding. And our focus has to be on the good. And, you know, I'm hoping that somehow, some way, you can find in your hearts to let go of and forgive what's back there and say, "Okay, today's a new day." We communicate. We have the two-on-two. We have your meeting, our meeting, whatever it takes. Because some of it, to me, was miscommunication. It was very much a, "This is what we thought. That's what they thought." And then the next thing you know, it's something that neither one of us wanted it to be. And the only way to stop that from happening again is to open the lines of communication to understand that we have our job to do. You have your job to do. And how we're going to bring those two jobs together for the betterment of our community, our businesses and the city is dependent on us not looking in the rearview mirror. It's dependent on us respecting each other and trying to go this way. So, to that extent, that's about all I'm going to say about that stuff.
Thank you, Laura.
In our conversation this evening, what I probably did, there was reference and recommendation to keep communication wide open between the two councils, right?
Yes.
The two-on-two. I've also extended to you that we always have an open slot at our meetings for a representative from the chamber. The key issue here is always going to be credibility and communication. Communication without credibility is useless. Communication between us sitting here, I feel is credible. I feel like people here have the ability to be honest with each other and we give each other the chance to make an honest conversation. I don't know. There's always that same level of credibility with other people involved. So, what I would ask, I guess not for me, I'm wholly in favor of bringing to the council the recommendation of a formal meeting for to take action to establish a two-on-two committee with the Chamber of Commerce at one of our upcoming meetings, to make sure that's in place beginning for the new school year, for the new year, starting in January. I think that's a great move. I would hope you would take the same action that your council would be able to announce publicly who those members would be and when they're going to meet and how that's going to happen.
Yes.
If you decide you would like to invite a representative from the city to sit as a liaison at your meetings regularly, then we would take that to the council and see if anybody wants to do that. If Robert wanted to or if Corinne wanted to, both have experience there. You know, it's wide open. You know, I'm totally in favor of going that far as well.
Daryl, it should be two-on-two, no one else. It should be them working out the issues and because if you put too many people...
Without a liaison, okay.
Yeah, you put too many people, then it's too much.
I like the two-on-two, and I think that makes sense. Would you ever...
You're too good.
Two-on-two. And let's make sure that that becomes our primary channel of communication. And then leave out some of the other personalities and some of the other questions of credibility that arise because of what's in the rearview mirror. Because while it is important to keep looking forward and driving while you're looking to the windshield, if you've caused a pileup behind you, you're responsible for what's in the rearview mirror. Not looking in that rearview mirror doesn't clear up that pileup. It doesn't heal the damage you've done. So, credibility is part of moving this communication thing forward. And moving forward together with the two-on-two and setting together a couple of these meetings a year, that's great. You know our calendar. It's going to be public. It's always public. It has to be. We're hoping yours will be, too. I'd love to see us involving with each other at those events. And there's no reason why our events should ever conflict because we should be doing different types of events. Once again, we should be looking at the community's lifestyle, family lifestyle, community celebration events, if you will. You should be celebrating business. You should be promoting business and working with the business side. If that's inviting us to a ribbon cutting, wonderful will come. If it's a park ribbon cutting, that should be on us. If it's a business ribbon cutting, that should be on you. You know, there's logical division of labor here. And so, we would hope that you would continue to do that. If you're doing something that's promoting, you know, training for your members, if we have a resource that we can provide and help do that, we will. You know, if you're going to talk about doing a seminar with your members on future economic growth of the city, and we can bring in Mike Brackett to come in and talk to you about that, while the city's working on it, that makes sense. So, we need to be looking at how we can collaborate with that. And that's something that two-on-two can do. But we should each be working within our area of strength. Yours is that commercial development. Yours is that advocacy side. So, it's not Jerry saying, "Daryl, I have to talk to you. They're charging me too much for my concrete." It's your board coming and saying, "Hey, you know what? We're hearing from other businesses, too, construction companies and such, that they need to look at this. Bring that to us." You know when it worked? Because it's worked. It worked beautifully whenever we were looking at, what are we going to name the highway and what are we going to do with Imperial Avenue? Because we were ready to move forward on one plan right away. All of a sudden, you guys came and advocated, and everything got paused. Now, we've still got to cross that bridge. That's still a monkey on our back we've all got to figure out because I personally don't want to keep calling that Highway 86. I don't want to keep doing that. Highway 86 doesn't have positive connotations. I want to find a way to deal with that. But I don't want to hurt businesses by changing the name the wrong way either. So, all of that's an important part of our conversation. You know, I've got ideas on where I think we need to put our next stoplight in town. Actually, I don't know where I want the next two, but that's me. But that's a conversation you guys need to be a part of because that's going to impact you as business people. So, those conversations are essential because we're coming at it, or I'm coming at it from a public safety standpoint, but also honestly, because I want to develop our marketability, our commerce centers. Where can we get businesses to grow? Okay? But so should you. And so, that's why that can stand out. So, I will bring forward, I will ask staff to bring forward in the future meeting in December or whatever, proposals to establish a two-on-two committee between our two boards and use that as our primary means of communication. And then we'll ask staff to suggest some possible dates in the next year. Calendar in maybe two or three of these over the next year. Or we can sit down and do another workshop like this. Okay? And we can then submit to your board those choices of dates, see if those will work for you as well, and we'll get those calendared in now. I'm hoping you'll take this up under your next council, under your next chamber meeting and work with us as well. That helps address the credibility issue and the communication issue.
Well, certainly, we've, I mean, all of us are taking notes and we're definitely going to be talking about this.
It'll be brought up on the next agenda, right?
You've brought, yeah, you've brought us a lot of, you know, good ideas. And we hope that we have provided you with some, you know, how, you know, some ideas for us and where we want to be as well.
Mr. Tucker, care to add anything?
Yeah, I just, you know what?
I know you're sitting here quietly. I can see you thinking.
I'm digging. You're right. And I think Laura did a phenomenal job of speaking. You know what? We're all sitting rotten dogs, and I'm telling you right now, if we all just put bygone, let bygones be bygone. And I tell the board members all the time, people, you'll get more with honey than you will with vinegar. You know what? Love your fellow person next to you. Don't... There shouldn't be any hatred in this city of Imperial. If you can't forgive and forget, then you need to get down on your hands and knees and start praying about it. Because I'm telling you right now, we got the best community in Imperial Valley, the safest city in Imperial Valley. I've lived here since I've been born. And I go out there to Aitken Road, and I'll tell you right now, I'd love to build more out there. Love it. The fees are so astronomical that there's no way anywhere I could afford it. No way. I'm going to build a thousand square foot on right now. I don't know if you guys did any research or anything on this because you probably talked about it because they know what's going on out there at the Lisa Tucker Center. But just to put on 975 square foot, $10,000. Does anybody here think that's fair?
I will tell you that your son brought this up to me. And I asked him, "Send me what you're being told. Send it to me so I can look into it." And believe me, we're open to hearing all of this. When I had a neighbor wanting to put down concrete, wanting to put down $3,000 in concrete, and they were going to ask him for a $5,000 fee, we, you know, I went, "What?" You know, it was very much taken aback. Those things have been addressed throughout this year. We've had staff looking into this. And I'm not saying we're... One thing you'll find is we're never willing, we're never going to dig in our heels and say, "Absolutely not. Discuss it." We'll always look at it. And we'll always try and figure out, is this the best way to do it? Is there something we can do better? All you have to do is talk to us.
Here's the thing that I've told everybody on the council and everything a thousand times. Give us a sheet of paper and tell us exactly what she was saying, VJ. I go there and I go try to get this permit 12 weeks ago. And I go in there, and Janet says, "Oh, yeah. I don't have time. I can give you an estimate in three weeks." Okay. So, I wait three weeks. I go back in, nothing. So, I said, "Hey, I need something. I need to start building. I promised Geothermal I'd build something." Add on to their office complex. So, I go back, $7,200 for a permit, $4,800 for water and sewer that I'm tying into my existing water and sewer at the shopping center. Then she tells me, "Go over to the school and get your school fees."
That I still don't understand.
Janet, why didn't you tell me that when you gave me all this paperwork that I, what I needed to do? So, then I go back in. She goes, "Oh, now you've got to go to the Air Pollution Control Board and get a permit." So, I go to school, $600 over there. I go to Air Pollution Control, $800 more over there. Then I get back and she goes, "Oh, now Armando wants engineering plans." I go, "What do you mean?" She goes, "They want cal, they want energy calks." So, now I've got to go back and get that. So, that's another $600. So, I mean, it's just on and on and on and on.
And I know I understand frustration on that. And here in the past, you know, Mr. Dale, Mr. Peckel, Mr. Eugenio and myself have been approached by different businesses, contractors out there talking about the fees. And we did bring it back. And we got some of those fees, I'm not going to say reduced, but we...
We somewhat changed them.
We changed them and were able to get rid of your deposits, your big chunks to where it was only smaller numbers.
It should be more flexible.
Yeah, so, we do listen. We do hear. We do bring it back. And we try to make the changes as much as we can. So, I think where you're going at right now is what we're going to talk about tomorrow. So, and I know the direction we're going is a different direction. We kind of want to stay here.
Well, the reason I say that is because we as members, people are coming to us every day and saying, "Jerry, I would love to build in this city. I can't afford them fees." So, what am I to tell them when I'm, and I'm new on this chamber. I've been here a month and a half, two months, whatever. I don't know what Jeff's talking about, about somebody's mad at, whatever. I don't, I didn't get into that. I don't care about that. Bygone be bygone, and let's go on down the road. But just like I went to him the other day to try to build the shopping center, I was going to expand it twice as big with a new restaurant. $100,000 for permits just to put a restaurant in six thousand square foot. To double, triple the size of my brick house cost... in six thousand square foot, to double, triple the size of my Brick House Coffee and Deli. And I said, "A hundred thousand dollars." So I'm like, how do I go to a person that wants to move into our city as members and say, "Yeah, we'd love for you to come to our deli, but it's gonna cost you $100,000 to build though." And that's not including the shopping center, $220,000 to build the whole shopping center out, the rest of it.
So I know tomorrow this is one of the things we'll be talking about, so we'll definitely cover that.
I will agree with you on this one point, though, that you brought up here, just to get a record. I don't understand how a business impacts school. School impact fees should be designed to go after square footage of housing, because that's bodies moving into a community that's gonna impact classroom space. Why someone having a bigger shop would require paying a fee to the school, I don't get.
I think what we're trying to say is that we want to work together to create a business-friendly environment.
And that's what things like tomorrow are about to do.
There's nothing more that I would love to see more than Aitken Road to be as beautiful as it's turning out right now.
Yes.
Absolutely gorgeous. The food bank is beautiful.
As you can see, this is one of the things that Daryl brought up, is that we're advocating for our businesses. So we will be there tomorrow night, representing our businesses.
I know, Ms. Eugenio, you've been sitting here taking notes, but is there anything right there?
I'm good.
I'm good.
No, I just really wanna see the relationship. I was through the whole situation, and it was on both sides. I think we all felt it, all of you and all of us, and I'm ready just to put it aside and move forward.
We've got a lot of new members, and we're all ready to put it aside and move forward.
There's a lot more time in front of us than behind us, right?
We want to work with you guys no matter what it takes, so...
So a couple of the words I keep hearing throughout the conversations, and I wrote them down as I started hearing them, repeated over and over and over, one of them was "help." And we talked, how does a city help the chamber, and how does the chamber help the city? But ultimately, what we're here for is everybody in the city to help everybody here.
Amen.
And I think that's one of those big ones. The other one that I kept hearing was "support." We all need support. We need support from one another. If we don't know what's going on with these fees, with businesses coming in and stuff like that, we won't know. We need that support. We can't always be out there, but you guys have the membership, you guys have the people. That's the support we need. But like, we need support from you, and I hope that you guys need our support too. Advocate, that's another one I hear. You advocate for all the businesses that are out there, the little ones, that don't have, that can't. But at the same time, we're here to advocate for our citizens, to make sure that they have the quality of life, that they have the best police department that makes a city the number one city in the state of California, where we can advocate for people coming here, to live here in this city. That's another one. And promote. We gotta promote the city in a positive way. And yes, I know there was things that happened, and I would agree with everybody else. I understand Jeff's frustration, I really do. And can we blame him? No. But we gotta promote the city. We gotta promote everything we have here. You wanna drive down Aitken Road and say, "Look, this is where I'm here." Promote the city. Highway 86, change the name, we don't wanna call it Highway 86. We wanna cut something out, but we wanna promote it, we wanna make sure that it's inviting for people to come here. Like Mr. Peckel said, it's somewhere you wanna go to, not drive through. So these are those words that I keep hearing over and over, and I think it's in all of our vocabularies, and it's something that we can all use. So with that, I, I'm for the two-to-one, you know, two-to-two, meet quarterly, meet every two months, whatever it is. Meet every month, like Mr. Dale says. You know what, every month, that's great, because there's stuff that happens with you guys every month, and there's stuff that happens with us every month. And what happens if we miss something? Where we could've helped support, advocated, or promoted, and we missed it. So I appreciate you guys taking your time out of your busy schedules to be here. I really do.
Thank you for inviting us.
Look forward to doing this a little bit more.
I thank my superintendent for not being upset that I'm here and not there.
You know, and...
What's her name?
I don't wanna, I wanna make sure we can keep this going. I'm looking at everybody as, before we got here, everybody was standoffish. Everybody was like this. But now I look, and there's smiles, now there's eye contact, to where the other eye contact wasn't this, you know? I, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna do good. I think 2020 is gonna bring in a lot of great things for the city.
We look forward to it.
Unless somebody has something else to add, I'll do a quick roundtable, and what I'll do is I'll alternate between chamber and city, and then we'll go from there.
Start with him, they got more.
Mr. Verma?
Yes.
Anything to add or say?
Well, you know, I'll just add something real simple. And like you said, everybody just changes the attitude, we're looking at each other here and everything else. That's real positive, and you know, to listen to what you guys are saying is, for me personally, is a positive because of my business here and so forth. Now, as my part of the chamber, the two-on-two was impressive to hear that, I was very glad that was brought up, because I think that's the most positive thing, how we can communicate with each other as we go down the line. But we all have to remember that we're all still human beings, and we really need to work together. That's about all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Ms. Eugenio?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback off that, but I just really wanna see us, I don't even wanna say kumbaya-ing, but us getting along, because in essence, we do support each other. And I'm just as concerned with what's going on with the city, having all my kids within the city, that I am with the local businesses. So I feel a very strong need to know what's going on also. But I definitely think it's support, we should be supporting each other, and maybe that's where the two-on-twos are gonna help, and stop the miscommunication between whatever is being said on Facebook or social media or wherever it's at. I think it'll stop it from the get-go instead of letting it roll on as long as it did. So I think it's a very positive step forward.
Thank you. Ms. Eugenio?
I just wanna encourage people to come to council more often. Mr. Tucker, every time I come to your coffee shop, you're complaining about fees and that, so you come to the council, right? That's what we're here for. And we're not here, we're not at the city doing the day-to-day. So we only get to come here a couple times a month, and we know this back information, but we don't, I don't, I don't see what you're seeing when you deal with the city on a daily basis, so...
Can I talk you guys into changing it, 'cause Wednesday night's Bible study?
We can't change it.
Can you guys change it like a Tuesday or Thursday?
Tuesday, Thursday?
No, I'm serious, is there any way you can change it Tuesday or Thursday?
Our meetings?
No.
Perhaps you can change your Bible study.
Yeah, oh, ask all the church members.
But again, that's, we have the same problems.
But not just for you.
But Jeff knows, I call him constantly and tell him, "Jeff, this is ridiculous." Poor Jeff, I bend his ear.
We'll have conversations later, 'cause I'm looking at stuff right now.
Yeah, me, poor Jeff, I bend his ear all the time, that poor guy. I thank Jeff, because he listens to me all the time, but, and I wanna make the city better. I wanna make that Aitken Road beautiful, I want it to be a nice complex. But I just can't, you know, and we can talk, you guys can talk about tomorrow. But I won't be here tomorrow, unfortunately. It's at my house.
I'm gonna let my board members speak before I end. So Michelle, do you wanna?
And I appreciate you guys, City Council, taking the time, time by us. I think that this was a big step in the right direction, and I look forward to sharing ideas and helping the community grow.
Mr. Dale?
I'm just thankful that everybody got together tonight. That's the only thing I can say. I'm still, I have issues that I cannot get over right now. And I know that we've gotta be thankful and blessed for what we have, but we also gotta be honest about everything we do from this point forward. And yeah, we're centers, so in that, keeping that in mind, we keep on life, because that's one way to filter us. But I think that's all I have to say.
Ms. Bren?
No, I just appreciate the, having the meeting and reaching out to us to get this going, even though it wasn't quite the meeting you wanted, Jeff, it was, at least we got some dialogue going, and we can work from here.
I honestly believe, and I'm gonna say this, but tonight, I'm sure everybody's gonna have their opinion, but I'm opinionated, you know? But I can honestly say that it, and this is a shame on me, because I shouldn't have done this. I should've come to you and asked you, "Mark, what is going on?" There's one issue that I still can't get over, because again, if I had an employee, which I've had employees, done things, I had to let them go, because perception, we wanna work together, perception is everything. But I honestly believe, you and Michelle, we could've sat down and talked about this, this could have been, shame on me, because I didn't do it, and I'll admit it. I was angry, I'm still angry, because I believe that there's one person that has created this mess, that's created this drama, that we should've never been here. So that might, I'm just gonna shut up and may as well, yes, I'm sorry.
All right, to finish up, I appreciate that, and I look forward to our chamber board and the city working together to bring some of these things you may mention of, Daryl, you know, the businesses and enhancing the businesses, and things like the signal lights on the highway, and things like that, to get that whole area developed out there. All those things we can work together to house on, so I look forward to that.
I think I pretty much said all I, all I need to say, and I do appreciate the opportunity
to be here and to work together, and, because you're busy people, just like we're busy people. So to take the time, I think all of us have pretty much made the commitment, just the fact that we're here and we're taking the time, that we take this all very seriously, that it is extremely important to us. And I'm sorry that Jeff still has some issues, that hopefully in time will be resolved, but again, you know, there have been hurt feelings on both sides of the fence, and for me, tonight is the night that I'm done with it. I am wanting to move forward in a positive way for the best, for our community, for our businesses, and for each one here, because we actually hurt ourselves more than we hurt anybody else when we carry this with us, so I guess that's, I probably said way more than I should've said, and I should just quit while I'm behind, so, but thank you so much.
We're not looking behind.
Thank you for your time, thank you for making it an important enough issue, that you wanted to bring us here so that we could start working together, and I am a policies and, or not start, start, I'm a policies and procedures person, and I love the idea of having the two-on-two, because I think part of what brought us here is the fact that we had too many people talking to too many different people about too many different things, and there was no real official channel of communication that broke down in so many ways and so many, I don't even wanna go there, I'm done.
You're done.
I'm done, just, thank you so much.
I thought you weren't gonna say anything.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's been a long day. I left my house early this morning, and I do apologize, I've been texting, but I have a friend that's in the hospital, and I've been trying to communicate with her and her daughter who's in needles, so I apologize if I'm a little bit distracted.
Take a breath, take a breath.
I don't wanna be rude to everybody out there, but basically, maybe it's because I need more coffee or less coffee, I don't know. But I just wanna say thank you. I think the fact that you're willing to come and talk here, and we're all here, shows that we want good things to happen, and I am all on board for the two-on-two, and I'm done.
I think we already went to Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, I think I said enough too, I'm like Laura.
Mr. Peckel?
There are two moments in the last month, a month and a half, that for me clearly define how bad this got, and how unhappy I've been, and why. And one moment that gives me hope. The first moment over the last month and a half that came up was when Michelle was getting on the board, and she asked me confidentially, I'm gonna violate that trust, if her serving on the chamber board would cause her a problem doing business with the city. If I would have a problem, just if I would have a problem, you did, you came and asked me about that when you got on, and I said, "No," because I said the chamber board needed everything she would bring to us, because she's a good board member. But it bothered me, that she had, felt that she had to ask me that. That should never have had to cross anybody's mind at any time. When we're all here to serve our community, we should never have doubts about how somebody across the table would perceive us for that. So that really, that was heartbreaking, when that happened, and I understood why, but it is disconcerting. The other moment was at a Chamber mixer at Humble Farmer last month, and I was invited to attend by Chris Marks, the owner, and I went, and when I walked in, I was confronted by someone associated with the chamber, who questioned why I was there. And when I said, "I'm here because Chris invited me," that person laughed in my face and walked away. And I thought, "Wow, what a sad place we've come to, that I go to show support for a chamber event and a local business, and I'm challenged and then ridiculed." That was disheartening to me and disappointing, because it showed how far things had descended since May, since May. That was disappointing. But the moment that gives me hope was tonight, because Mark was the one that said, "Hey, why can't we do something that even, God help him, even the board of supervisors and IID board figured out, which is a miracle in and of itself, and communicate between them, between our boards, in a two-on-two, open communication chain." That gives me hope going forward, that no matter how bad things looked even a month and a half ago, they're gonna look better going forward. And maybe grateful for him, for his experience in serving this community, both as a chamber member and as a council member, and for all of you for giving up your time and all of this board for the time that they take, because it showed me that there is room to work together. Despite those issues, those conflicts that have existed, and those doubts that may still permeate some of the air around us, we know that it's gonna get better.
Thank you. Ms. Peckel?
Well, you've heard the chamber board, and I think, I don't know what your expectation was of this meeting, but I think that we accomplished what we came here to do, is to give you an idea of where we were and what our thoughts were and such. And I appreciate each and every one of these board members. I only have the president from a ceremonial standpoint, but each one of these board members can carry this chamber 100%, and they speak on behalf of the chamber. And so I only, I appreciate the fact that there was an invitation to come talk to you, because we definitely want to be a resource to the city. The chamber as a whole, this chamber board will change, but the chamber idea and the vision does not. We want to be supportive. And so we appreciate the fact that you gave us the opportunity to voice our opinion and our thoughts and where we want to be, and so I can only expect good things moving forward. So... So I'd like to thank each and every one of you for giving us that opportunity. And please don't hesitate to reach out to any one of us for any concerns that you may have in the future. Thank you.
So, just to start off by saying, thank you for taking your time today. I know, like I said earlier, we've come a long way from where we got here. All I can say is 2020 is going to be a better year. We look forward to supporting your events, showing up to you events. I'm not going to sit here and lie to you. I miss the events, because they were fun. That's what I believe in change is. Go out, meet new people, meet these businesses, have fun. And like I said, I look forward to doing a lot more of that. Attending your, your educational events that you have, and all of these little things that you do, that support and help and promote and advocate for your businesses. With that, thank you to the council for showing up, city staff showing up, helping out. So if nobody has any other questions? All right. Thank you, and I'll let you to the next meeting.